My wife gave me an haircut this morning.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Fritz and I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of April 29th. Tonight's meeting, virtual meeting, is being broadcast live on South Coast Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to the work of Manager Mark Sarah as well as IT Director Brian LaRue, who help us with our meetings, these virtual meetings. This meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on May 6. The public participation of our meeting is suspended due to the fact this is a virtual meeting. However, the public can email any questions or comments they may have to the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k1.ma.us. First on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? I don't see anyone, thank you. Next to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fritz. A few things I want to mention. First off, we've been communicating that this weekend is going to be our first ever virtual 5K. A number of folks in the school district, particularly at Oak Middle School, got this started and there's information that you'll be able to find on our website tomorrow. We'll be sending it out through social media. Essentially, whether it's riding a bike on your treadmill, running outside during social distancing, or just moving, doing any kind of exercise for 30 minutes. And we ask people to sign up and share the fact that they're doing it and we're hoping this is a great community event. So, I'm hoping for a lot of participation with our virtual 5K over this coming weekend. Next, I'd like to mention some actually appreciation days that are coming up. First, this coming Friday, May 1st, has been designated by Governor Baker as School Lunch Hero Day, especially in recognition of the work that cafeteria workers have been doing across the Commonwealth and across the country to help students and their families who face food insecurity issues during the school closure period. It's an appropriate recognition to celebrate these outstanding employees who do such excellent work, of course, all throughout the school year, but particularly meeting the needs during this difficult time of school closure. Also, May 1st is the annual National Principal's Appreciation Day. Our nine principals of our Shrewsbury Public Schools are outstanding leaders who do really exceptional work. And I think during this time of the pandemic, they're rising to the occasion and really leading their school communities in extraordinary ways. So we'll certainly be recognizing and thanking our principals on Friday. And then beyond that, next week is actually Teacher Appreciation Week nationally, with Tuesday being National Teacher Appreciation Day and Wednesday being National School Nurse Appreciation Day. This is a time given the really outstanding work of which you've heard a lot the last few meetings and Mrs. Clodder will be referencing again shortly, to be recognizing the extraordinary work that our educators do, whether they be teachers or school nurses. So lots of reasons to be even more appreciative than ever this year during these recognition days. And that is School Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update regarding the school district's response to the COVID-19 school closure. And Dr. Sawyer and District Administrations will provide that report.
All right, I'm gonna share a PowerPoint presentation. I'm just gonna confirm, you can see that slide up on your screen?
Yes.
So again, during this time that we've been working through unprecedented circumstances, want to provide the community with a brief update relative to our response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the school closure that resulted. We'll once again emphasize the three key messages. First, that the health and wellbeing of our students and families and staff is our first priority. That, given what an extraordinary time this is, that everyone in our community shares a collective responsibility in responding to this challenge. And I think that we're seeing with the numbers plateauing, that the social and physical distancing that's happening across the Commonwealth is helping and working. And we need people to continue to do that. And then, of course, even though our schools are physically closed, we're continuing to support our students, families and staff from a remote way or in a remote way, empowering them to continue to learn as we go through this time together. I do want to share that we have sent out, as of earlier this afternoon, each of our nine principals sent out a school-based survey regarding remote learning. We're asking that parents and caretakers respond to those surveys sometime between now and Sunday, May 3rd. And we'll be using that feedback, which will be incredibly valuable to us as we continue to work on improving our remote learning program, given the school closure lasting through the end of the school year at this point. And so with that, I'll ask Mrs. Clodder to share some updates relative to, we got some additional guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and to give some insight into what we're doing and have been doing over the past week to continue to enhance our remote learning program.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Here we go.
If any of these scenes seem familiar, I hope you can take heart. We've gone from crafting the beginning of schedules of how remote learning was gonna take place to balancing work and learning, to thinking about how to incentivize personal responsibility in math simultaneously. And one of the things that occurred to me was, although we're challenged in the district, this is really a challenge that's global. It's currently estimated by UNESCO, which is the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization, that 90% of learners worldwide, which is more than a billion students, are out of school right now, which is a really sobering statistic. But also one that reminds me that when we say we're all in this together, we're talking way beyond district lines. Of the 195 countries that have closed schools, 128 of them have yet to reopen. So the problems that we're solving are problems that are really facing everybody. And I want to acknowledge everyone's ongoing efforts. For families working from home, they're finding new ways to support their children and new ways to be patient with that process. Teachers with young children are finding new pockets of time to continue their work. And we're all learning new technology tools to facilitate remote communications. So with hope, with support from both home and school, we, we hope that students will become increasingly independent. And our investment in technology platforms has been able to engage students in ways that are either familiar at the middle and high school level or chosen with developmental capabilities in mind at the elementary level. I'm sure that all that said, people have worries about their kids and what this pause in school closure will mean for their learning when we resume. That's to be expected. But I'm confident that we'll sort it out because we're getting better and better together at solving novel problems. Although technology tools are one way, we're facilitating exchanges. Teachers are finding lots of ways to connect with students, including even the US Mail. Much of the familiar information on, much of the slides, information will be familiar to you, but I wanted to recap kind of our resolution to both think about what students need academically and what they need emotionally right now. One of the things that we've really been working on as we've refined our plans is what office hours will look like. For kids at the elementary level in particular, an office hour is not something that's at all familiar. And yet, both parents and students really welcome the chance to get help and to connect with their teachers in real time. As we go forward, we've been thinking of ways that we can be proactive and encourage teacher outreach as well as reactive. And so one metaphor we've thought about with the help of Donna Rice, who is an instructional coach and curriculum coordinator at Spring Street, is thinking about a consult with your doctor. Sometimes you have a regular standing appointment. Sometimes you call the phone and say, "Do I need to come in? Or can you just advise me over the phone?" Sometimes you can exchange information in email. And sometimes doctors reach out proactively because they want to check on you based on their past history and/or a risk factor you might have. And so teachers are beginning to think about how they might use office hours proactively to pull together small groups and/or to offer more supports to families and students that need them. At the same time, we're trying to manage that in a way that feels predictable so that everyone understands kind of what their obligations are and what their opportunities are to reach out to one another. I wanted to acknowledge Brian Laporto, who's been really active in Twitter and thinking about how to support his students and particularly our seniors, who I think are missing occasions like their concerts and missing opportunities to band together with one another. I think that that photograph just really captures the efforts our teachers are making, not just to support our kids as students, but to support our kids as students, I mean, as people. So, one of the things that Dr. Sawyer mentioned was that in the last week since we've had an update, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came up with refined guidelines on remote learning. And one of the things that was really gratifying was to see how well our plan aligned with their new guidance. The Commissioner confirmed that the approach that we took to identifying priority skills and standards was the right one. He recognized that a phased approach was a sound way to go about it because, along with other districts in the Commonwealth, we were responding at the time with the information that we had. And his new guidance stresses the importance of partnering with families with an emphasis on connectivity and content. So, we've tried to stress a balanced approach to engagement. We've tried to make sure that we're proactively reaching out to families that are struggling to connect. And we're affirming again our goal of academic as well as social emotional learning as, as well as our guiding principles of grace and flexibility. So as we try to hold kids accountable for doing their learning from home, we're also trying to think about ways to appropriately engage them and ways that won't tax their families over much. In my presentation on April 15th, I shared this infographic about the implementation dip. And I talked about how with new tools and professional development in place, we would hope to move through these phases of change. And I'm happy to report we're beginning to get through the exploration phase and climbing farther up the learning curve. So this is a scene from our elementary professional development session on CSO. You can see Kelly Fenner in there on the left, who's playing the role of facilitator during the ZRM session. And Lynn Doherty on the right, who's doing the teaching. And if you know, the more people you have on a Zoom, the more important it is to have somebody who just helps field questions and forward them to the facilitator. So that's what's happening in this clip. The facilitators are pictured, but not the participants, because I didn't ask them to share their pictures. But there are 38 of them on this session. And it's worth noting that once Zoom was a new tool and one that was a technology tool that was unfamiliar and people were scrambling to learn more about it, it's now the effective means by which we're sharing new information. So, there are 38 people who are on this Zoom today, but there are 81 people in the course so far and we just opened it last week. So, CSO is the platform that we've decided is going to be most supportive for our youngest learners. So, we have Schoology in place for our middle and high schools, but CSO is the platform where students can submit work to teachers and teachers can push out work in ways that feel user-friendly to young students. And it first became available to all elementary teachers on the 16th of April. And one week later, you can see it's already being widely used by teachers and families. This is just the statistics for Floral Street School. And just as we're providing professional development for elementary teachers who are using CSO for the first time, many of whom are, we're putting together professional development for educators in grades 5 to 12 in thinking about the platform we're using. Although it's something that's been in place, there are certain features of Schoology that people are exploring for the first time because they're a better match for remote learning. So the hopes that some of the participants in today's PD session shared was that they would become more tech savvy, that they'd feel comfortable thinking about Schoology as a tool in a remote setting and not just when they're live with students. That they'd be able to link some of the features to some of the communication strategies that they already had in place. And that they would think through some of the nuances of how to get feedback to kids in ways that felt like it was timely and helpful. That's such good stuff to talk about. It was really exciting to tune in and hear just how dialed in our educators are to thinking about that cycle of improvement. They're really excited by what they're seeing from kids and wanting to really support the ongoing efforts of our students. So 10 people tuned in for the live session at the upper level today. That's fewer people, but again, Schoology is a more familiar platform for educators at that level. Still, there's 54 staff that are in the course so far. So we've tried to structure the courses for teachers, much like the way teachers have structured some of the learning for kids in the sense that it's self-paced, the resources are shared asynchronously as well as having live opportunities to check in, much like office hours. And finally, although we put some formal professional development in place, I want to recognize that there are many informal, job embedded professional development sessions happening out there all the time, just from one colleague to another. And this week, I want to shout out to Sarah Matthews and Hillary Clegg at Sherwood, as well as Maury Egan at Oak, who have continued to provide professional development in a range of ways, both technology and non-technology. So just as I started with gratitude, I want to end that way. I've been really impressed by the efforts that our educators have engaged in. I'm really gratified that our plan kind of is aligned with the guidance that we have from the Department of Education. And I know that, you know, we will continue to find ways to make small incremental improvements so that families will experience, to the best that we can, an engaging and productive learning experience.
Thank you, Mrs. Clodder. And again, was, as I mentioned in the start of the meeting, we have sent out surveys to all of our families and so that feedback will be important as we continue to refine this remote learning program. At this point, I want to ask Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to provide an update relative to how we're supporting families, in particular with the beginning of virtual IEP team meetings. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Belcito.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As we work through our thoughts and our feelings and experiences to date regarding the closure, we continue to think about all students, but especially our students that might be struggling or are vulnerable during this time. In a conversation last week with a former colleague, I was reminded of a conversation from years ago about access and equity. We're on this new journey, climbing an enormous mountain. All of our students with their backpacks can get on the trail to the top. Some might find ways to cut through the terrain while others will have a hard time climbing. Some students' backpacks are heavier right now, whether it's because of technology, food insecurity, stress of family, circumstance, illness, or disability. Even though our efforts continue to evolve, we must keep all of these things in mind as we move to additional responsibilities for our staff and our families. The term "meetings" might seem simple, but in our world, it's not simple. The meetings can be complex, they can be extremely emotional, and they're intricate to student need, which involves paperwork, it involves time, it involves effort, it involves legal mandates. But most of all, it involves students who are at home right now, struggling to learn, hopefully finding some success in their learning. Today's communication or tonight's communication highlights our move to hold virtual meetings for individual education programs and 504 accommodation plans. According to the Department of Education, in circumstances where an IEP team meeting may be needed to be convened during this time when IEP teams are not able to meet in person due to the health and safety considerations while students are closed, districts should convene IEP team meetings or 504 accommodation plan meetings telephonically or virtually. If families choose to engage in a virtual meeting of any kind, families will be asked to complete a virtual team meeting consent, which will be sent electronically by the building team chair. We recognize the many challenges to maintain our usual IEP or 504 process, but given the length of the closure, we are going to do our best to maintain our practices. IEP and 504 meetings will only be held if parents are comfortable with this option and have the appropriate tools to participate by phone or on the computer. If a family is not comfortable with the option, the meeting will be rescheduled for an in-person meeting after the closure. Meetings will be held through teleconferencing or video conferencing using Zoom. Staff will collaborate with parents and elicit input about student performance both before the school closure and during remote learning. IEP and 504 team members report on observations and data from when school was in session. Based IEP and 504 recommendations on observations and data, not on current presentation during the school closure. If needed, staff have been told that it is okay to turn off video after our introductions and briefly mute audio as needed. All of these things will be discussed before the meeting will even take place as our staff are in their homes, just as our family are in their homes. And we want to respect everyone's privacy and confidentiality as much as we possibly can. Shrewsbury continues to consider how to best balance the needs of providing instruction in this remote environment and holding virtual IEPs and 504 meetings. To the end, the district is evaluating which IEPs may be held or 504 meetings may be held, and which would be too complex to hold in this environment. If a meeting is held, the plan will be based on what the program would look like if school was in session. All IEPs that were in place at closure, if expiration occurs during closure, would continue on a stay-put status until such time that the team can meet and draft a new IEP. This list is not exhaustive and is not intended to limit meeting requests. It's intended to serve as a means to support effective communication. Here are some examples of different types of meetings that may meet your needs or families' needs during closure. Initials and initial and reevaluation meetings for evaluations that were completed before we closed. Transition meetings for students identifying as a high level of need. And the appropriate team chair from the next level would be included. And what I mean by transition meetings, we have children moving from grade to grade and building to building. We also want to think about our annual review meetings in order of expiration. So we're going back to before we closed up until this point and then moving forward. Outside evaluation submitted by families to the district would also take priority. Any rejections to any of our process would be on a case-by-case basis at this time. However, as noted prior, service providers and coordinators and teachers will be communicating with families regarding how remote special education learning experience will align with the individualized education plans, goals, and accommodations. Further considerations for all team members, including the families, most importantly, will include how the Department of Education recognizes that not all timelines will be met. We should have further guidance from the state and federal government fairly soon. Our next call with the State Department of Education is on Friday morning. We work collaboratively with parents on all issues. Parents will need to, as I mentioned earlier, consent to this virtual meeting. Virtual evaluations are not permissible at this time. Parents will begin the option to attend via Zoom or audio only. Parents are allowed to decline virtual meetings. If so, please know that we will be holding meetings when school resumes. We can propose that any reevaluation that we conduct during the school closure are held at the time of the next annual IEP meeting. And staff will certainly help with the details around those things in an explanation. IEP and 504's process will be dated from the date of the meeting. So for example, if your child's IEP date was March 20th, and we are not dating it from March 20th, we're dating it from the time that we meet in the next coming days and weeks. IEPs, the IEP team chair and the 504 coordinators will identify team members to co-host on any of these virtual meetings in the event that they need to pause and also to support the level of detail that's needed, whether it's note-taking, sharing of screens, sharing of documents. So, lastly, I'd just like to thank you for the continued opportunity to share and communicate with our community regarding our response to the needs of students and families. While this addition to our remote learning may add to the backpacks I referenced earlier, it may also help a student or family to find another trail to the top of the mountain we're all climbing.
So I want to thank Mrs. Clodder and Ms. Belcito for their information they provided this evening to the committee and to the community. And at this time, we're happy to take any questions or comments the committee has.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Lindsay.
Thank you all so very much for continuing to share. I think it's important that we be as transparent as we can. As, as we've said over and over again, we are figuring out new ways to collaborate as schools and communities and parents. I want to report my, my child had his first Zoom lesson that involved breakout rooms. He really enjoyed that and getting smaller, an opportunity to have a smaller group conversation. As I understand, the teacher was moving in and out of those rooms and so it's nice to see some embracing of, of some of that technology. As a parent myself, I remember last, last, last week when we met, we were talking about how Schoology is necessarily always so intuitive. And I wonder if you're thinking about opportunities, just as you were providing some trainings for educators to learn about technology for the parent. I find it a little confusing, lots of folders, lots of different places for things to go and to find the assignments and the calendars. If there's an opportunity to share some of the work you're doing in a way with parents, if you've thought about that such that that collaboration could even go to the next level.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. We have thought about that. It would be facilitated by the same people that are right now facilitating PD for the staff. So, we have some remote modules that we could push out. And then the, the question I have was really, what would we learn from the survey that might direct that a little bit better? So we pressed pause a little bit to gain some more information. And then thinking, I would hate for our pushing out something that is kind of a, a walking through in a, in a remote way to feel unfriendly. So trying to figure out how we might combine an offer of, here's a Zoom time, almost like what we found is working better with our educators. Here's some information, you can look at it beforehand, you can look at it as we're talking about it, or you can bypass the face-to-face question and answer and do a completely self-driven module. But trying to time the communication in a way that doesn't overwhelm everybody is really key because what I'm hearing from principals is that families are sometimes saying, "I want more", but sometimes saying, "Oh my gosh, please don't change anything or ask me to do anything more." And so trying to find the sweet spot where we can reach out to parents because we really never offered PD to parents before is something we hope to learn more about with the survey results.
Thank, thank, thank you. I think the, the other piece that I would just offer, two other, two other pieces I'd love you to just comment on, Ms. Clodder. The, one, I wonder what your thinking is about, as we, as we now know the closure is permanent for the rest of this, this school year. You're thinking about the number and frequency of assignments being turned in and feedback? And if we expect, particularly, I know at the elementary level, we're talking two assignments a week that are sort of on a, expected to be turned in. Obviously, sometimes it's saying you can share with your teacher, but also the, the type of feedback that we should, we should be seeing from teachers on, on that material. I've been inquiring a little bit around the community and some are wondering, as with everything, some want more and some want less. But, but the feedback is so critically important to learning. And so, understanding what, what you're thinking is there. And then my, my second one, I just want, want to share again. I think, I think certainly in my household, the transition to office hours has, has I heard you talk about it. My family still doesn't know how to use it. And I sit on the school committee and I say, "You can reach out during office hours", and they feel like that's a burden to their teacher, that's awkward, that's admitting, you don't know. So, so as much as we can help in those Zoom sessions or other ways to encourage students and give them opportunities to understand what makes sense. Because I have kids who say, "Well, I won't, I wouldn't do it then", and they don't, they can't imagine an opportunity, what that would look like for, for themselves. So just a bit of feedback that, from where, from where I sit, that's still, that's still a hurdle we're, we're trying to get over. There's a little like, I wouldn't go ask for help. I would, you know, I would, I would lurk in the back of the classroom maybe and ask a question, but proactively to come to office hours is a, is a more of a hurdle.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. I think those things are actually related because some of the best feedback is when it's individualized and teachers are able to connect and deliver it in person. And I think those office hours, some of that proactive piece I was describing is what we're working on, particularly at the elementary level. I do know that it's a phenomenon kind of across levels, though, that if kids perceive that you only show up to ask that if kids perceive that you only show up to ask for help, whether it's, you know, in a traditional school setting, kind of after school or not, that's, you don't want to self-select to be the kid that needs help. So trying to think with, with teachers around, what are the high leverage assignments? The guidance from the department has been helpful in thinking about where the feedback is going to be most important. But I think my time and attention lately has been really driven to thinking about how are we going to support kids in practicing skills, you know, we would know in a normal summer break that we'd need to support our readers so that they maintain their skills. And we know we haven't had a typical break in any way. So I've been really focused on how are we going to support kids and their skills in a broader way? I think the feedback piece is also really important and I know that that's on the mind of our teachers. So I expect that the office hours will be the solution, particularly for students at the elementary level. Because that face to face feedback that's based on the work that they actually submitted is going to be most helpful. And the Seesaw platform, I think, will feel more user friendly, certainly than Schoology, to having those exchanges, both with students and with families. But that's just up and running. So that will develop.
And figuring out, I think, how, how that feedback loop, whether it's when it's not office hours, when, when is it appropriate to include parents and when is it less appropriate or less necessary? So, you know, I can track down my child and say, have you heard back on the writing pillar you did last week? In some cases, I'm the communication channel because it's, I'm emailing the teacher with the completed work and for the younger grades. And for the middle grades, I'm sort of like badgering a little bit. Is it happening? Is it happening on Seesaw? Is it happening on Google Classroom? Maybe it came, maybe it was an email that through the schools. And obviously, my kids are in a, in a transition years where they're not, they're not with a one-on-one device. And so there might, might be different things happening. But that's, that's, I know an area that we should continue to think about so that we know kids are getting feedback. Because then otherwise, it's even harder for them to stay checked in to, to this new modality. And it's like, no one's paying attention, or only moms paying attention.
Yeah, I think students are, you know, the key to keeping kids engaged and motivated is, is making sure that that feedback loop is strong. And I think it's appropriate for parents to wonder, you know, should I be, should I be reaching out and monitoring? Or should students be as they get older? Really, they should have responsibility for that. But in this remote environment, I think we can't over communicate. And I would just say, if there's an individual question any parent has, please ask your teacher. I mean, we haven't stopped responding to email or changed those expectations in any way. And teachers are more than willing to, you know, have a phone call or schedule a meeting to address an issue. And I think they don't know what they don't know. So don't hesitate. Parents shouldn't hesitate to reach out to teachers. They'll find a way. They always do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Jason.
Just a comment. I want to extend my thanks and my compliments once again to our district leadership team, specifically for the response, the way that you've been reflective and responsive when it comes to feedback. I think that I'm not alone among school committee members. I say the volume of feedback we've seen either through the school committee, through us as individuals that we passed along or directed at central office has been obviously for understandable reasons. It's been a much larger volume of parent communication than we've ever seen. That's fantastic. We love to see that level of organization. Most of that feedback is very polite, respectful, and thoughtful. Some of it candidly isn't. Some of it is a little forceful. But I have seen consistently that this district leadership team has responded to each piece of feedback as an opportunity to be reflective. It hasn't been received as criticism in any way. It's been received as an opportunity to grow and to learn and to develop. So I just wanted to extend my compliments to this leadership team for the way that you've been processing this high volume of feedback.
Thank you.
And I agree. I think the district has moved in a very short amount of time to model that it's getting better, you know, we're, we're learning as we go through it, families are learning. So I think it's a tremendous amount of work that's been done. So thank you to all of you. Just to piggyback on Lindsay's comment about the platforms we're using, Schoology and Seesaw, and having self-directed modules for families, I think, would be very instrumental. Just because, you know, we're not trained educators. And I think understanding a little more about the platforms that the students are using will be helpful. And having them self-directed, they can do it at their own time. If they're working from home, helping their kids, have it at a time, you know, they can just log in whenever they want to and kind of work through it would be really helpful. And I, I wonder, you know, I think you're right. Let's wait to see what the survey says. But I think that would be a really good addition to what we're giving parents right now. Anybody else?
One of the nice opportunities.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Of, of having kind of remote PD taped is that it can really be enjoyed more broadly with a lot larger audience. So we have those resources. We might as well figure out how to leverage them effectively with a, with a bigger group. Really happy to do that. I've just been mindful of asking too much of too many staff too soon. But I think that they have a lot of capacity and can do that.
Are there programs just on how Schoology works, how Seesaw, what, you know, how do these platforms work? That somebody could work in a self-directed? I think something like that would be very beneficial for families and you could just push it out and they can do it whenever they want.
Okay, Dr. Surratt, anything further?
No, again, I just want to thank Ms. Claver and Ms. Belcito and, and just to emphasize, you know, Ms. Belcito's remarks, the under normal circumstances, the, the process of team meetings and developing IEPs is, is a complex process and to do that remotely is going to be that much more so. And I appreciate all the work behind the scenes that our special educators have been doing and particularly our special education directors and team chairs to prepare for this. I know they'll, they'll do it as well as they can. And certainly, we know that we cannot do the kind of volume we would do under normal circumstances. So prioritizing the way that Ms. Belcito presented will be important. But like anything else, we want to make sure that our families are feeling connected. And they can always reach out to their liaison or team chair if they do have a question about, about the process. But I know Ms. Belcito has been regularly communicating with the parent community of students who have special needs and will continue to do so. And appreciate the work that she and her department are doing. Along with, again, underscoring, you saw the slide there with Ms. Kelly Finneran is a fourth grade teacher at Coolidge School and Ms. Lindardi teaches fourth grade at Spring Street School. And that teacher leadership of doing training among their peers is really very powerful and, and much appreciated. And we'll certainly take under advisement the feedback we received this evening from you folks. So thank you and we appreciate the, the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Collins will update the committee on the pandemic's impact on finances and operations relative to the Bus Contract Amendment Agreement, payroll continuity, year-end FY twenty forecasting, and the FY twenty one budget status.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Have a PowerPoint to share, which I see as being launched. So I will work through that. As you said, there are a variety of topics. Can everybody see that screen? Okay? No. Let me pause and make sure everybody can see it. Is there anybody that can't see it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not coming up, Patrick.
Okay, let me.
I don't think the screen shared.
Just one moment. Okay. Try this one more time.
If not, Patrick, I'll try to share it from my screen and just pull it up.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to work through several topics here in terms of this update. The first is the update relative to the school transportation contract amendment recommendation. Several documents on that, that you've been provided is part of the, uh, tonight's meeting packet. Pay continuity recommendation from Dr. Sawyer. I'll have lots of information on that. Just a couple of pieces around year-end forecasting. And then again, looking forward to fiscal twenty one and what some of those new timelines and constraints will be. So first is.
Patrick, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you do us a favor and can you just hit the presentation mode on the slide so that it'll get a little larger on our screens?
How's that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So first is the transportation contract amendment. And at the next agenda item, there'll be a recommendation to have the school committee vote to support the contract amendment. I wanted to provide some background information. And some of this is a reminder, but I think it's worth repeating, given the gravity of the situation with the contract is that back in March twenty seventh, the Commissioner of Education provided guidance for all Massachusetts public school districts to work towards a resolution to provide resources to their school transportation provider to ensure their ongoing viability. They also facilitated a method by which school districts would, with a common transportation provider, would work together as a block, if you will. And that would be more efficient in terms of negotiating contract amendments with each of the Commonwealth's providers. There aren't a, a lot of providers in this industry, as you know, from past bid reports. There's few in Massachusetts and nationwide because there's very high entries to, or high barriers to entry in the industry. So it's important that we ensure the viability of the school transportation companies during the school closure period. There were eleven districts that all have AA Transportation, which of course is headquartered in Shrewsbury. We all work together. We're primarily located here in central Massachusetts. And worked to reach an agreement with the owner, Ron Earnenwine, and come up with an amended set of terms and conditions for the closure period. Essentially, what that calls for is a payment of seventy-five percent of the normal daily rate for the cost of a bus for each of the closure days. And that payment would provide, again, viability so that the companies can continue to pay for bus leasing, facility overhead costs, insurances, and employee costs, and employee benefit costs. So they are at the ready when we need to have them come back, which potentially, we're not sure yet, but potentially could be some sort of modified summer school program at the earliest, but certainly for the fall. Even with this agreement, transportation companies like AA Transportation will be experiencing still a significant loss of revenue because they earn their money in a variety of different ways. Not just home to school transportation, but also for all of the athletic trips, field trips, and bus monitoring services. This agreement does create some savings in the current year budget only. It doesn't carry forward to next fiscal year. It's really just the savings for the closure period, which is about a third of the year. I just detailed here what those savings are for the current year. Just over four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars with a reduction in the home to school costs, bus monitoring services, athletics, and other kind of related school events. That may, might seem like a lot of money, but in the context of an almost three-point-eight million dollar transportation program for these services, it's, it's only thirteen percent. Another contextual piece would be in terms of that savings, again, it's, it's very helpful for this fiscal year and, and hopefully we can leverage it into next fiscal year through savings in the circuit breaker program. But we are still experiencing this year, one-point-seven-six million dollar loss in revenue for tuitions for preschool, full day kindergarten, fees, food services, and facility rentals. So I don't want that to be lost in, in this whole equation here. And we're certainly experiencing new and unbudgeted pandemic-related costs for educational software, the meeting software, as I reported earlier, additional iPads and health and hygiene supplies. And looking forward, we do know that we are looking beyond the one-point-seven million dollar in cuts and reductions in program and staff already made out of next year's budget plan. We're looking for significantly more, expect to have significantly more reductions beyond that one-point-seven million dollars. We don't have definitive numbers yet, but we know that will be significant. So I have more information on another topic here and I'm going to kind of delve into and ask the school committee to take up the transportation contract as your next item. You have a copy of that contract amendment and I'll go over a little bit more details on that. With respect to pay continuity, we know that the following groups, the administrators, teachers, counselors, nurses, clerical IT, and paraprofessionals are engaged in remote learning or in supporting the school district operations or management. And so that's really not much of a decision to be made there with respect to pay continuity. Folks are working yet just in different locations. We do have a couple of groups of staff who, just by virtue of their work, have really no opportunity to work at all. And that is door monitors and crossing guards. The additional cost to pay them past your, your last vote of through May first. So from May, May second effectively through the end of the school year, the additional cost to keep them on payroll would just be over thirteen thousand dollars for sixteen staff. And of those sixteen, it's important to know that nine of them have another job with the school district as, mostly as paraprofessionals. The food service group, of course, is funded strictly out of the Food Service Revolving Fund, which gets its monies from the lunches and breakfast meals sold and also state reimbursement for that program. They're working on a reduced schedule meal support, providing meals on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays still from the high school facility and also delivering meals to about a dozen families who just have no transportation, but still have that food insecurity need. The cost to continue pay for that group, again, from the, call it May second through the end of the school year, just over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That group has forty-eight staff, fourteen of them who do carry health and life insurance benefits with the town. And excluded from that is the director and administrative assistant. They are both, again, working through this closure period to maintain operations and support the overall program. If the committee voted to continue pay for the food service group, this is what the financials would be estimated to look like for the end of this fiscal year. Fortunately, the beginning of the year began with a solid about a three-month operating reserve of just over six hundred thousand dollars. The revised revenue projection is just over one-point-four million dollars with school closure. Typically, it's a two-point-one or two-point-two million dollar program. Expenditures, assuming pay continuity through the end of the year, would be over one-point-eight million dollars for about a three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar net loss. But still, because of the beginning positive balance, we still could end the year in the positive around two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. And that'd be about eleven percent reserve on a, in a revenue of two-point-two million. So for this group, there is, it's important for the school committee to know that if you were to decide for pay continuity, that there is funding from that account. Differently from the extended school care group, again, all of those staff are provided, are supported through, strictly through the tuitions that are charged to parents for those childcare and enrichment services that are provided throughout the school year. And during the closure period, staff have been engaged in some online training, but of course, just, it's impossible to prove. And during the closure period, staff have been engaged in some online training, but of course, just it's impossible to provide the before and after-school care. The additional cost to pay that group to the end of the fiscal year is just over a hundred and seventy-eight-thousand dollars. With your last vote, as a reminder, you voted to continue pay for this group through May first, and that created a deficit in this account to the tune of a hundred and ten-thousand dollars. In the negative, which would be would have to be covered by the general fund budget. You can't have a negative fund balance in a in a special revenue fund. So if you were to vote to continue pay continuity, which is further exacerbate what is already a deficit there. Of this group, there's ninety staff, nine of whom have health and life insurance benefits, and of the ninety, fifty-six of them have a second job with the school district as paraprofessional. Thirty-four of them, it's their only job with the district. This is what the financials look like for this particular group. They too began the year with a more modest fund balance of just over two-hundred-thousand dollars. That's a bit more than ten percent of the annual operating revenue. The revised revenue projection is just over a million dollars with school closure. And then assuming pay continuity through the end of the year, there'd be a net loss of over six-hundred-thousand dollars in the end-of-year balance would be in the negative to four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars. Again, that would have to be covered by the general fund operating budget if you decide on pay continuity. A little bit of information on unemployment, cost forecasting, and I'm going to talk a little bit about furlough versus layoff. That's a question that's come up a lot. But furloughing employees or laying them off costs real money to the town of Shrewsbury. It's not a zero-sum game, if you will, because we're we have to reimburse the state unemployment system some funding to support the unemployment costs. There is a lot of moving parts to the unemployment system right now due to the pandemic. There is a possibility, although I believe it's a small one, that if employees were to be furloughed now, that they might be able to collect over the summer months. That's something that's typically prohibited because we give employees, school employees, at the end of the school year, a letter of reasonable assurance. And that's a term that's used to say, because you're a school-year employee, we're going to reasonably assure you that you're going to have a job in September. And as a result of that, those folks cannot collect unemployment typically over the summer months. But as a to increase the surety that that wouldn't happen, we would plan if employees are furloughed to call them back for a couple of days in the middle of June and have them come back and either clean up spaces if we're allowed access back into the building and prepare for the upcoming year, conduct some more training, and if at the time we have more information about protocols for reopening, we could train staff on that. Right now, because of the federal stimulus monies, the town cost for unemployment, which is typically fifty percent of an average weekly wage, has been reduced to twenty-five percent. And we're also, we also know, and we've heard from media reports and from the Department of Unemployment Insurance, that because of the pandemic, furloughed or laid off employees can receive an additional six-hundred dollars per week on top of their fifty percent of average weekly wage. So if employees, some employees were furloughed, this could be one of those rare opportunities for so-called win-win situation where we reduce our costs, but yet the employees, some employees would benefit by that with this additional six-hundred dollars. There's a lot of information here, but if you were to look at, for example, the the top row here of crossing guards, I just put some cost estimating here of the number of total days remaining from May second to the end of the school year, what the week equivalency is, what our daily cost is, so in the total liability. And then, you know, what we believe to be right now, the unemployment cost is in the second green arrow where it says forty-seven-thousand-eight-ninety-one near the bottom. That would be the twenty-five percent cost to the town if all of these groups, all of these employees were furloughed from crossing guards to door monitors to extended school care. And yes, I'm foreshadowing a little bit the superintendent's upcoming recommendation. If they were not to be furloughed, the remaining annual payroll cost would be over a hundred and ninety-one-thousand dollars. So it's a significant difference to have to pay about forty-eight-thousand dollars. Again, the furlough versus layoff, what are the basic differences? A furlough is a temporary leave due to lack of work, whereas a layoff is a permanent termination of employment. Furloughed employees can retain employee, excuse me, employer-sponsored benefits with the employer's share still paid. It just means that any kind of furloughed employee who's not getting a paycheck from us and has benefits would have to write a check for their share and pay it to the Town Treasurer's Office. If someone were laid off, they would lose access to the employer's benefit plan, but offered the opportunity for continuation of benefits through the COBRA program, and then they would bear the total cost of the premium and usually administrative fee of another two percent. So it's about a hundred and two percent of the normal monthly cost. And under both situations, furlough and layoff, both employees can apply for unemployment insurance, provided they meet other eligibility requirements, which you know, sometimes there's a minimum amount of employment that's required a number of days with an employer and what have you. So but under both situations, furloughed employees and laid off employees can both be eligible for unemployment insurance. Dr. Sawyer, do you want to talk about the recommendation now, or should I skip through some of these slides quickly, or?
I think we'll talk about it in more detail, but I think just, you know, what you can see on the slide is that and this is obviously a very difficult decision, but it is my recommendation to the school committee this evening that we place three job categories on furlough. That would be the crossing guards, the door monitors, and our extended school care staff, with the exception of the Director of Extended Learning and her Administrative Assistant, because they'll be needed to support the staff for the unemployment filing and all the paperwork that we'll receive from the state as a result of that. We would furlough them effective at the end of the day Friday and then have them return to work on Monday, June fifteenth. For Mr. Collins' mention, we'll have some interview training and and work for them to do in order to make sure that we have them engaged then and also having them given the reasonable assurance that their jobs are returning. And I'll speak to it in more detail, but essentially, this is an economic decision based on the impact on the budget to continue pay and hopefully with their unemployment benefits, be able to have them be supported financially, but at the same time reduce the the economic impact on on the school district's budget. But I'll speak in more detail when we get to that point when we're asking for the vote.
Again, to recap, if those groups were furloughed, the school department budget savings, if you will, from the various programs would be approximately a hundred and ninety-two-thousand dollars. And then the new cost to the town unemployment budget would be twenty-five percent of that or forty-eight-thousand dollars.
And if I can just break in for a moment, can you go back to that slide? Thank you, Mr. Collins. I just want to be very clear that while there's money in the appropriated budget that is there for the crossing guards and the door monitors, and those dollars would essentially be saved. That's a fairly small amount. The the large part of that amount that would be expended upon extended school care is not actually in the budget. It's not money that's there that we would save, but it was money that we would otherwise have to find in the budget from other savings in order to continue pay for the extended school day, this care employees.
Okay, moving on to other budget matters in terms of how we're doing overall from a financial standpoint this fiscal year. I'll be able to make a more precise forecast in the coming weeks once some key decisions are made. There's just so many open-ended pieces right now that rather than create, you know, twenty-five different what-if scenarios, if you do this, if you don't do this, but do this, and it would be hard to understand. We need to make some key decisions. First, School Transportation Contract Amendment, the pay continuity decision. We need to learn a little bit more about what's going on statewide with respect to out-of-district special education tuitions for private schools. There's some uncertainty there with state conflicting state guidance. We have some outstanding collective bargaining items to impact bargain with unions, and we need to take a closer look at the need for any additional educational or operating resources from now to June thirtieth. So once those things are more certain, then I'll be able to bring back to the committee a more precise and better year-end forecast for fiscal twenty. There also is some remaining revenue to forecast. We do still have a number of families who owe the district money, whether it be for fees or tuitions or overdue lunch accounts. And I would urge families who can pay those as soon as possible. That would be beneficial to the school department. And all that information is in the Parent Power School accessible through the Parent Power School account. And then there are some questions about, you know, requests for refunds and and how we're going to make decisions on that, and there might be some other school committee recommendations that we make in the near future for that. Switching gears in the last topic, looking ahead to next fiscal year. We know that Mr. Mizikar reported to the Board of Selectmen last evening on a very detailed and updated revenue forecast for next year using a range of scenarios, all of which, of course, point to significantly decreased revenues from his original budget plan. So that's what really is, we expect to have to participate, if you will, in more budget reductions from our fiscal twenty-one plan beyond the one-point-seven-million dollars that was already planned for. We know that the annual town meeting has been postponed. I believe that the tentative new date is June twenty-second. And again, that's tentative, but that has been penciled in. And then we also need to update our own revenue projections for the state Special Education Circuit Breaker Program. Quite a bit of uncertainty there now, post-COVID, because we know state revenues are severely impacted. And then also take another look at our own revenue generating fee programs like bussing and athletics and activities and see how much for, you know, if we need to be making some downward projections there ourselves, which would impact our fiscal twenty-one plan. Finally, we need to review all of our expense budgets for next year. We do have new information. Of course, this evolves over time with respect to out-of-district special education and vocational placements. We know that at this point, likely having to increase the vocational technical high school budget by probably nine placements or about a hundred and fifty-thousand dollars based upon students from eighth grade who've been accepted or put on the waitlist, and how many were originally budgeted. Take a close look at all the personnel changes that have occurred in the last four to five weeks. And then try to, as best we can, forecast what is it that we might need to operate differently next school year? What kind of resources are we going to need? And there's a lot of uncertainty there, so I think we're going to need to just set aside a block of funds with maybe not a lot of specificity, but knowing that there will be some expenses that we just can't anticipate now about protocols for reopening or reopening differently. So that's what I have in terms of this update, and I can unshare this now, Mrs. Fritz, if you'd like. And go back to the normal screens. I think.
Almost there.
Okay, sorry about that.
Here we go. Before we move into the payroll continuity, I think let's take the AA Transportation Budget Amendment first and talk about that, and then we can move into the payroll continuity piece. Is that fine with everyone? Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment? I'm not seeing any. Excellent. So anything further from Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins on that before we vote?
You have the detailed memo from Mr. Collins in your packet that he summarized during his slide presentation, I think, you know, it makes it clear. Even the wording in the motion that you'll take up is that this is mutually beneficial to both the school district and to our partner, AA Transportation. We have a longstanding, strong relationship with AA being a local Shrewsbury-based company that really has grown over the years to to represent or to work with multiple districts. I do think that the approach that is being used across the Commonwealth where, you know, consortium of districts who are working with the same vendor or working together to negotiate a fair settlement that that helps keep these transportation companies solvent during the closure so that they're available when we return to school, and also reduces costs to the school districts is was wise, and I want to commend Mr. Collins, who was one of the lead business officials along with the colleague, I believe, from the Wachusett District, representing the multiple districts, working with AA to get what we think is a very fair deal, and I do recommend that the school committee approve it this evening.
Thank you. There are no further questions or comments. May I have a motion that the school committee, in accordance with the Massachusetts Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidance issued on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, and in the mutual interest of Shrewsbury Public Schools, in the AA Transportation Company vote to approve the amendment between the Shrewsbury Public Schools and AA Transportation, Inc. of Shrewsbury, Mass., dated April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, contingent upon the final approval of the Shrewsbury Town Manager, who is the municipality's chief procurement officer.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote is required. Lindsay?
Hi.
Dale?
Hi.
John?
John, you're muted.
You're muted. Nope, we can't hear you, John. Thumbs up, John. John gave a thumbs up. Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Sawyer, we'll move on to the payroll continuity.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I, the committee has a memo in your materials from me that I'll summarize here relative to my recommendations. And certainly, since the closure began in mid-March, we've recommended to the school committee to make incremental votes to continue payment for all of our school department employees during this, again, unprecedented time. The last vote takes everything through this coming Friday, May first. And as we've continued, Mr. Collins has continued to do financial analysis of our situation. We know we were waiting the last time you voted on April fifteenth. We did not have confirmation or surety yet about the length of the closure, but since then, in the interim, Governor Baker did act to close all of the public schools and private schools in the Commonwealth for the rest of the school year. I mean, as a result, we have to look at what makes the most sense going forward. I think, you know, the easy part of this is starting with the the folks who are doing the work right now relative to the remote learning. But let me also indicate, you may recall from the last meeting, Mr. Collins had shared a framework for decision-making around this pay continuity decision, looking at everything from fiscal impact to availability of funds, cost Uh, looking at everything from fiscal impact uh, to availability of funds, cost implications. Uh, of furloughs, uh, administrative burden on processing things and our ability to do that relative to unemployment. Uh, the impact on both this year's school department budget as well as next year's. Um, state and federal guidance and eligibility, uh, disruption it might cause employees. And of course, the morale and loyalty of our employees, as well as the sentiment of the taxpayers uh, who support our our public schools. Um, there's a lot of dimensions to this, of course, and we want to do right by our employees to the greatest extent possible. Um, I think that in terms of the groups, uh, our professional educators, those are our teachers, our counselors, psychologists, school nurses. Everyone who is a part of the Shrewsbury Education Association's Unit A, uh, bargaining unit. Um, continue to work uh, full time, just remotely. Uh, we also have our paraprofessionals, uh, who have not only been doing professional development and training, but now. As we've phased more into remote learning, are are providing a variety of supports for educators and for students, uh, and so are continuing to do their work in a different way. Our secretaries, clerical and uh, information technology support staff continue to work remotely. Um, so for all those groups, and and I'm sorry, one other, uh, the administrators, uh, whether that's our. Uh, administrators who are represented in a bargaining unit, our assistant superintendent, uh, excuse me, assistant principals. Um, and athletic director in the SCA Unit B. As well as the uh, what's known as non-represented administrators, which would be principals, central office administrators. And a a handful of other administrators in different roles, um, who are not part of a bargaining unit, uh, all of those folks are are working just differently. Um, and we need that work to continue and so my recommendation uh, is to. Uh, that it's necessary and appropriate to continue those groups' pay um, through the remainder of the school year. The school year now is ending on June sixteenth, um, some uh, folks will end that day, others their contractual arrangements are to work beyond that. Uh, but certainly through the rest of this fiscal year, uh, that ends June thirtieth, we want to continue of the pay according to those contractual arrangements. The other group that I want to speak to specifically is the food services group. Um, our cafeteria workers, uh, their work is supported by. The revenue that comes in from the school lunch and meal program, um, that revenue, of course, has stopped as a result of the school closure. As Mr. Collins mentioned in his report, uh, there is uh, enough funds. Uh, in the revolving account for food services to continue to pay food service workers through the end of the school year, if that were to be what we decided to do. Um, as a school district and what you decided as a school committee. Um, they, you know, a a number of those workers are continue to do work to provide the meals program or offering to families who need. Uh, school provided meals during the school closure, uh, we have some need for all of our workers to be engaged uh, in the next, uh, in the near future. Uh, possibly as soon as next week, uh, doing uh, some cleaning of cafeteria and kitchen spaces and and uh. Sorting through some of the uh, non-perishable goods and whatnot, uh, now that uh, under school closure, the state has uh. Uh, enabled maintenance and cleaning work to to go on in school buildings. Um, so there is some work coming up for those workers. Uh, but uh, given that, again, we, you know, want to continue to try to take an incremental approach where we think that's uh, the right thing to do. My recommendation uh, for you, for the food services group is to take another incremental step. Um, and approve this season, this evening, uh, to continue the cafeteria workers' pay for the next two week pay period. Uh, that would cover May fourth through May fifteenth. Um, that will cost approximately thirty four thousand dollars and again, that money is available in the revolving fund for food services. And then my intention would be to bring an updated recommendation around that employee group. Um, at our May thirteenth meeting, uh, for determination and how to go forward from that point. Uh, but the groups I mentioned earlier, uh, we do have uh, crossing guards, door monitors and extended school care workers. Uh, for whom my recommendation at this time is to place them on furlough. Um, this is a first in my career, I've never had to recommend uh, asking ever of the school committee to put any of our employees on furlough. Um, and really, this is because of the bottom line economic impact to the school budget. Unfortunately, uh, as Mr. Collins uh, reported. Uh, we do not have any funds left uh, in the revolving account for extended school care because of the lack of revenue from the tuitions that families would have been paying. Um, and because of the continued pay we have been providing uh, to all those employees since March, uh, mid-March. I do want to to say, and I had a conversation earlier uh, today with Karen Isaacson, the Director of Extended Learning, who's in charge of that program. Uh, the uh, members of of the extended school care uh, employee group have been doing a variety of work at home. Um, they have been participating in some trainings that Ms. Isaacson has provided to them. Uh, many of them have participated in training that the paraprofessionals are getting, that those who even weren't, don't serve in those roles otherwise. Um, they've also been doing, working on projects to improve their program, uh, whether that's putting together new materials, organizing materials, making plans. Uh, for when school does resume, um, and I know uh, the quality of these employees and I know that they're willing to do whatever we ask them to. Um, if they were to continue to to work from home. Uh, unfortunately, because of the financial situation that we're in, uh, to continue to uh, have to find dollars in the appropriated school budget. Um, to shift, uh, that that's not budgeted uh, for payment of these employees. Um, in order to uh, continue their pay, um, is just not something I think is is the the right financial decision to make for the school district at this time. Um, which is why my recommendation is uh, to to place these employees on furlough. And as far as the door monitors and the crossing guards, it's just not really any way for us to provide them with the kind of work going forward. That uh, uh, is goes along with those kinds of positions. Um, I do want to emphasize again, as Mr. Collins uh, reported, uh, that because of a furlough status. Uh, these employees would have the ability to file for unemployment benefits. And because of the enhanced benefits that are being provided due to the new federal law that was passed. Uh, we hope that the economic impact on our employees is is minimized to the greatest extent possible. Um, and that this will enable us to save district funds that uh, we would otherwise have to take from some other part of the budget. Uh, but also uh, not have a a negative impact on the employees because that's something we care very deeply about. Uh, I also wanted to emphasize that those who are benefits eligible will continue to have their uh, town portion of their healthcare paid for their premium. Uh, but they will have to pick up the payment of their employee portion that typically will just be deducted from a paycheck. Uh, and we will work, Ms. Isaacson and her assistant, uh, will work to support those employees and we at Central Office will, of course, as well. In terms of any of the specifics of filing for unemployment and maintaining their health insurance for those who have that benefit through the town. Um, and so, again, it's with great reluctance that I make this recommendation. Um, I do want, you know, I certainly know, uh, both from my perspective as superintendent and as a parent to all three of my children. Um, utilized the extended school care program for many years, so when they were younger. Um, so I know firsthand the quality uh, that this program provides to students, I know the dedication that these staff members uh, bring to this work. Um, and uh, it it is uh, uh, it pains me uh, to to make a recommendation that could. Uh, is certainly going to require them to to go through the process of filing for unemployment and. Um, it potentially is going to have an economic impact on them and their families, uh, and, but ultimately, in the uh, greater. Picture of the of the school department budget and what we need to do, looking at the very, very difficult financial times that we have ahead of us. Um, I did not feel uh, that we can continue to support the uh, pay. Um, by utilizing funds in the budget that would have been earmarked for something else. Um, so with that, uh, that's my recommendation, um, at this time, uh, and I'm happy to. Answer any questions uh, that the school committee has uh, relative to the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions from the committee? Dale.
Um, I I support the recommendation, I feel that as a town and as a district. We have an obligation to access as many federal funds and state funds as we possibly can to get ourselves to the other side of this problem. And the enhanced unemployment that is being provided uh, is one way for us to access that, so I think that that's the responsible thing for us to do. And I think that the employees involved are not going to be harmed uh, by this, so I think it's a good idea, but I have one question. And that is, if an employee's hours are cut, so they were working X hours and now they're working Y. Are they eligible to apply for unemployment for that gap?
My understanding is yes.
Yeah, they are. Okay, so that, that was my question, because so many of the uh, people involved in extended day. Have uh, uh, other jobs within the district and so I'm assuming that uh, that's, that's kind of critical, so that's, that's very good, thank you.
Right, and that's also the case for some of our employees who are uh, crossing guards and uh, door monitors as well.
Right.
Anyone else? John.
Uh, can you hear me now? Are you okay? All right, thanks, I got too much technology. Uh, first off, uh, I want to thank uh, Patrick for the presentation and the work that he's he's been doing and make thing, to simplify things for us. Uh, he always takes uh, complex situations and makes them very simple for us to understand as challenging. Thing as uh, as all of this is and uh, I do support Dr. Sawyer's uh, recommendations. Uh, you know, I believe it's fair, under the circumstances, it's very difficult, you know, I I know I've had experience with furloughs in the private sector, thousands. Of furlough workers as a result of what's happening, uh, and unfortunately, you know, we're starting to see it creep into the, you know, the public sector. Um, I do appreciate the incremental approach that you referenced uh, with food service workers, because there is still work that's being done and that needs to be done. Uh, to support whatever the new normal will be. Um, but uh, I think the challenge that we have is we don't have any revenue coming in. Uh, for for these services that we, that we uh, you know, rely on. Um, and you know, when you talk about a one point seven six million dollar decrease in revenue. Uh, you know, for services that for the most part are not active right now, it's it's very difficult. You know, when you look at it, um, I know in particular, when I drive through the high school parking lot, uh, on on a normal day. Uh, during the weekend, there's always events there, I think about the tax revenue or I'm sorry, the fees revenue that we don't. Uh, receive as a result what's of what's happening, so uh, yeah, it's very challenging. Uh, and I I I know how difficult uh, decision this this uh, had to be, um, but it is unfortunately the times we're living in. Uh, and I know just, you know, looking ahead, you know, obviously to FY twenty one, you know, it's a lot of challenging. Uh, decisions that uh, that need to be made as a result, so I do support this recommendation tonight.
Thank you, John, anyone else? Lindsay.
And certainly agree with my colleagues that in many ways, this is the responsible thing to do, but also it is a painful thing to do and uh, and so. I think it's important that we just reiterate as as was as was in the side deck, that. Uh, a furloughed employee and a laid off employee are entirely different scenarios. Uh, and a furloughed employee, we're not, we're not seeking to end our relationship with these employees, but that we need to take a pause on payment and. I take some solace in the fact that the unemployment benefits are, have really been enhanced and then for some individuals, they 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 might see. Paychecks are a little bit higher than they would have been receiving, so um. Uh, but that doesn't, and I and I think it's important that they all know that as well, uh, I envision all the comments from Dr. Sawyer about the quality work. Uh, that we certainly all hope that in our, in the future state, we're 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 back to business in August and they're they're right there with us. Uh, as we, as we make, make that transition, so, uh, but I am, I am in support, given our incredibly difficult, difficult budget situation, both. For this year and next.
Jason.
I appreciate that in the recommendation, every effort was made to ensure that the that, uh, all of our employees were paid as long as was feasible. I appreciate that we've managed to keep our staff all on the payroll up to this moment, uh, and while I certainly uh, support this recommendation with some regret. I appreciate that it is still the case that the vast majority of our staff are going to continue to be compensated for the work that we're continuing to ask them to do.
Thank you. And I I want to thank Mr. Collins for providing the cost estimates, I think that was very helpful for us as a committee. One of our main roles is the fiduciary responsibility in budgeting and we need to know what those cost benefits are. So, thank you, Mr. Collins, for providing that, that was helpful. Um, I think, you know, none of us, this is not being done lightly, none of us feel good about it. Um, it's not something we, whatever I I would have ever expected, but we are in a circumstance that we never imagined. I agree with Lindsay, I'm really glad that this is a furlough, uh, these are, we're taking a pause. Um, it's not a great thing, but at least, you know, you're still employees, we still need people to be here, ready and willing once schools reopen. The extended school care, I, as a former user, that is a phenomenal service. And it's a blessing for families who need after, before and after school care, so again, it's it, this is very, very difficult for us to do. But this year's budget is squishy and next year and the year after, I think we're gonna have to make some very difficult decisions, so these are all part of this. Current and future decision making that we're gonna have to do, so I also do support the uh, recommendation that Dr. Sawyer has provided. Anything further before we move to a vote? None. There's three, we're, we have three separate categories, so if it's okay with the committee, we'll take three separate votes. I'm gonna go with that, okay. So, the first is may have a motion to approve the continued compensation of the following salaried and hourly employees. During the school closure period at their contractual rate of pay, based on their typical time worked per pay period. For the remainder of their contractual work year during fiscal year twenty twenty. Which ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty, professional educators in the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A. Paraprofessionals in the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association. Unclassified staff including secretaries, clerical support staff and information technology staff. Administrators in the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B and all non-represented school administrators.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, roll call vote is required, Lindsay.
Hi.
Dale.
Hi.
Jason.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries unanimously. The second will be uh, a vote on food services. May have a motion to approve the continued compensation of all food services department employees. For at least the dates of May fifth through May fifteenth of the mandated school closure for the covid nineteen pandemic. At their contractual rates of pay, based on the typical time worked per pay period.
So moved.
Second.
Second and roll call, Lindsay.
Hi.
Dale.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries unanimously. And the last, may have a motion to place the following positions on furlough effective with the end of business on Friday, May first. Due to start of business on the morning of Monday, June fifteenth. All crossing guards, all door monitors and all extended school care positions. With the exception of the Director of Extended Learning and the Assistant to the Director of Extended Learning.
So moved.
Second.
Move second, roll call again, Lindsay.
Hi.
Dale.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Fritz, may I add something?
More.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, I I do want to uh. Underscore that uh, well, Karen Isaacson is the Director of Extended Learning. Uh, but along with is working closely with Mr. Collins and Ms. Malone, the Executive Director of Human Resources. And uh, will be communicating as soon as possible, uh, and and will. Communicate with all the employees who have been furloughed as soon as possible to outline all the details relative to. Um, moving forward to file for unemployment benefits as well as uh, to uh. Uh, if they're, if they are benefits eligible employees, uh, to be able to uh, get their uh. Situated in terms of making sure they maintain their their healthcare, that that will be important. Uh, again, it's a, I know it was a difficult decision, uh, for the school committee, uh, we appreciate your support and uh, I think as uh. Uh, Ms. Fritz said, the uh, fiduciary responsibility uh, that the school committee has is is uh, extremely important. Um, and you know, this is one of a, probably a series of difficult decisions that'll have to be made in the coming weeks and months ahead. Uh, you know, the end of Mr. Collins' report, I just want to emphasize again that the. Really uh, extreme situation we're facing relative to our finances. Uh, absent uh, federal stimulus, uh, and depending on what ends up happening with levels of state funding. Uh, we face an extraordinarily difficult position next year. Uh, again, we can't put a number on it, uh, I know Mr. Mizikar presented last night to the Board of Selectmen. Relative to uh, some projections on loss of revenue on the town, just in the town government side of things. Uh, and so, you know, we, there's a lot of uncertainty right now, uh, but one thing that is certain is that we have extremely difficult times ahead. Uh, we'll be working very uh, carefully and closely with Mr. Mizikar and his team, of course. And we will bring information to the school committee and to the community as we are able to confirm it and receive that. Uh, but I I can't emphasize enough uh, that in addition to all the difficulties we're facing as a society due to the pandemic. Uh, the economic situation is dire, um, and we will need to uh, make some very, very difficult choices in in the, the, as we think about the next fiscal year. Um, so, again, I appreciate your support and uh. Uh, we're hopeful that we'll be able to work with these employees who have been furloughed uh, in a way that will be as supportive as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our school committee meeting held on April forty second, twenty twenty, are there any changes or corrections? Say none, they can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of negotiations with some or all of the following, the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, and/or non-represented staff where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body before the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. We have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.